Officially open for Liverpool City Council on the 26th of April 2023. I'd like to remind everyone that in accordance with the council's code of meeting practice, other than the public forum section, this meeting is being livestreamed. We will now start off with a prayer and acknowledgement of country and an affirmation. And I'd like to invite Mrs Najjar, the council and executive support officer, to please read them out. Could I invite everyone to please stand and now be followed by the national anthem?
Before we begin proceedings, we would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and their ancestors past and present, the Capragol clan of the Darug nation. I also acknowledge that this land was accessed by peoples of the Darug and the Darug nations. We affirm our hope and dedication to the good government of our city and well-being of all Liverpool's residents, no matter their race or creed. Today, we affirm our hope for sound decision-making by council, which will improve the quality of life in our city. We express our expectations and best wishes for Australia, our nation's future, the mayor, councillors and staff of council, and all those associated with good government in Liverpool. So unfortunately, the priests couldn't make it today, so I'll be doing the prayer for council. For the God of our faith, we who are gathered at Liverpool City Council pray for the good government of our city. We pray for the well-being of all Liverpool's residents, no matter their race, gender or creed. Today, we pray for sound decision-making by council, which can improve the quality of life in our city. We pray for Australia, our nation's future, for the mayor, councillors and staff of council, and all those associated with good government in Liverpool. Amen.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. We have councillor Nathan Haggerty, who is attending remotely. If I can move that we councils accept that. Councillor McNair, second to councillor Green, all those in favour, against the clerk carried. We have no apologies. Today, we have unfortunately two condolence motions. The first one is for Mrs Dorothy Nell Brain, B E M. Today, we pause to honour the memory of Dorothy Nell Brain, who passed away on the 13th of April 2023. She was a prolific contributor to the Liverpool community and was passionate about the preservation and promotion of Liverpool's history and heritage. Dorothy and her late husband Gordon were the lifeblood of the City of Liverpool and District Historical Society during the 70s and 80s, and Dorothy was awarded Life Membership by the society in 2017. Volunteering was a significant part of Dorothy's life, and she worked tirelessly for the community, from working for the local P and C to scripture teaching at the Holy Trinity Anglican Church in Larnia, to visiting aged care centres and organising craft groups. Dorothy was recognised for her service in 1981 by being awarded the British Empire Medal and awarded a member of the Order of Liverpool in 2009. Dorothy survived by her children, Vicky, Diane, Arthur and families. She was a cherished grandmother and great-grandmother. On behalf of Liverpool City Council, I humbly express my deepest condolences to her, her family and friends, our thoughts and praise with Dorothy's loved ones at this difficult time. No, I don't. Yeah. Sorry, I've misplaced the other one, but it'll sure make its way to me. Could I invite everyone just to please stand for a minute of silence on behalf of Dorothy? Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. Next is the confirmation of the minutes of the previous council meeting held on the 29th of March 2023.
Moved.
Moved. Councillor Rhodes, second deputy mayor, any discussion? I'll put the matter, all those in favour, against the clerk carried. Public forum, there are no presentations. I will now move on to representations. Today, we will be having seven speakers and three of them are online. The first one is, I'd like to invite Mr Mario Podromu. Podromu? From CoLab and Law Mediation, who address council on Plan 03, Sirius Road, Voyager Point.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Mayor and councillors, for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. Appreciate it. So I act for the owners of lot 75 on this item on the agenda. They are two local families, the Peacocks and Condolions, and their fathers bought this land over 45 years ago. Ms Condolian will be speaking after me on behalf of the families. There are three lots on this agenda item. Our lot is the middle lot. The largest lot is to the north, and it already has a dwelling house and other structures on it. And the lot to the south on Sirius Road has a dwelling house that was approved only two or three years ago through the court, though, through agreement in the court, with the agreement of council's experts, though, in ecology, bushfire, town planning and archaeology. So out of the three options in the report, our client support option three, which is to leave the land in its current zoning, and...
John Fern, who passed away on the 19th of April 2023. As a past president of the City Liverpool District and Historical Society, John, together with his wife Barbara, kept the society going through the tough times in the mid 90s, and this allowed it to maintain its purpose and continue with their work. One of John's legacy to the society was the donation of a cot that he had slept in as a child, which had been in his family since the 1850s. The preceding condition of the item is a testament to John's passion for history and heritage. John was an interesting man that never failed to sustain the interests of anyone he was talking with. He will be missed by many. On behalf of Liverpool City Council, I humbly express my deepest condolences to his family and friends, our thoughts and praise with John's loved ones during this difficult time. May he rest in peace. And I'd like to move that the condolences for both be accepted, as usual. Second to councillor Green, all in favour, against the clerk carried. Thank you. We'll now move into Plan... Declarations of interest, sorry, yes.
I have 1.08. It's non-procurnary, significant. I'm the president of an organisation which is in dispute with council, so I will leave the chamber.
Thank you. Sorry, any further?
Same here.
On the same item?
Same item.
Just have to... What is your nature of your interests?
Non-procurnary, non-significant, I believe.
Will you be staying or leaving?
I'll leave the chamber.
Leave the chamber. Just make sure the proper paperwork is filled out.
Thank you.
And thank you, Deputy Mayor. Okay, we'll now move into Plan 01, in the booklet, page 52, tab 1, with the recommendation on page 53.
Happy to move that way, Mr Mayor.
Move councillor Rhodes, second to councillor Harrell. Any discussion? I just wanted to ask a quick question through the CEO to staff. How are modifications dealt with? For example, if we used to replace, for example, who probably locked up 20 different modifications, will each one of them have to be exhibited for 28 days separately as a modification? And number two, when a tenant wants to move into a council-owned property and a DA is required, does that also require the same things to be dealt with?
Thank you, through the CEO. So there's a criteria within the draft policy whereby it is recommended that the director of planning and compliance has delegation to determine particular low-risk applications, including alternates to any building that's not a heritage item, advertising signs, maintenance and restoration of a heritage item, minor building structures projecting from a building over public land, or modifications of a certain minor nature.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against the clerk carried. Next item is Plan 02, page 74, with the recommendation on page 75, a planning proposal for 368 to 370 Cow Past Road, Middleton Grange. I would like to move that this matter be deferred for a site visit. Second to councillor Harrell. Any discussion?
Just a question in terms of the site visit. Will we be given sort of any briefing documents or anything in preparation for the site visit?
Yeah, I think we have the information there. I can let you know the concerns that I have as regards to the interface with the residential around it. If you look at, for example, page... Page 78. One, I find it quite interesting that they're going to be knocking down a petrol station and a... A bulky, a petrol station and a KFC to build a bulky goods premises. I don't understand the economics behind that. It's very, very unique, like the land is developed. But if you look at it, you know, they've got a side setback of three metres. Now, it's their side setback, but it's from the residential houses that are next to it. You couldn't build two houses that close. That's not what I'd like us to see, but why I think it's good to go on site is to understand what is there now and how that looks like, especially when you're increasing the height limit to 12 metres. But then, once again, if you look at the other setback, you have a similar scenario. So I think it's good if we just have a look at it. That's what I'd like to see in particular. So I don't think we need more... Microphone.
I'm not contesting the value of a site visit. I just wanted to know if there was any additional materials that, you know, will be provided.
Unless we ask for it, I guess what I'm getting, if we ask for it, we need to, but they're the two issues that I wanted to defer to go and have a look at, and I think it's worthwhile we all go and see it. So if everyone's happy with that. Councillor Harrell?
Yes, Mr Mayor, I also have issues with that property. At the moment, the way it's configured, it has major traffic problems. What happens is because there's a KFC and a service station, you have people from Khan's Hill going to that and then going to the nearest intersection and doing illegal U-turns. And there are around 30 of those illegal U-turns a day. It's causing traffic issues, so I think that needs to be looked at. And also, the access, there is actually a cul-de-sac at the rear of it. That hasn't been mentioned in the reports, hasn't been looked at. So I think it's good that we're going to go out there and have a look.
Where do you get the 30 U-turns from? Where do you get that information?
Qantas Drive. So what happens is they go out of that service station.
I get you. I'm saying, where did you get that number from? Like, where's...
The police.
Okay.
Police.
All right. Thank you. Councillor Haggerty?
Yeah, just one, you can take this one on notice, but I just found it interesting that the way this got to where it was was by adding additional uses to the existing zoning. Can someone just give me some information on how that, when that was done, when the additional uses were approved? Two, your shout for KFC, Mr Mayor? That's a joke.
Sounds good, as long as we don't have to wait in the big queues, because I have seen those queues, councillor Harrell.
That is my local KFC, and that does get big queues. Third, I think, just in terms of deferring this, I'll just make a comment that I think the sentiment of this council seems pretty clear here, hearing from some others, maybe there's no need to defer.
Look, if you're indicating that you're planning on not supporting it, I think either way, I see what your point, but I think everyone deserves the natural justice that at least, you know, they spent, I can imagine, a lot of time on this application and spent a lot of money. I think the bare minimum is we can go out there and have a look before, even though it may be inevitable, but I don't know, I'd like to see before I make my decision personally. But you're free to move the alternate motion if you like, councillor.
No, look, fair enough, but I think we could probably come back next month with something that we can agree on.
Yeah.
By the sounds of it. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor, we'll take the first matter you raised on notice, and we'll forward that information direct to you.
Great. So move that it be deferred, all those in favour, against the clerk, unanimous. Yep, thank you. Okay. Next item is Plan 03, Sirius Road, Voyager Point, page 85, with the recommendation on page 86.
I'd be happy to move the motion with some amendments.
Then can I ask a question, Mr Mayor, in this regard, before we move the motions?
I'd prefer if we have a motion on the books first, before we order discussion. I'm happy to hear your... What's your question, Deputy Mayor? What's your question?
Well, the question is, through the CEO, through you, Mr Mayor, it brought to my attention a DA approved by the council a few years ago, in this regard.
I think 1970s. 1970s, it was...
Oh, I don't mind. 70s, yesterday, 100 years ago. Well, my question, as simple as that, is that the DA is still activated or lapsed? Before we make any decision. That's all.
I assume they'll have to take that on notice. Yeah. Thank you.
If you're going to take it on notice, I would like to move that, just to defer this item for next meeting till we get all the information correct. Thank you.
All right. So we have a move of a deferral.
So what is the deferral for? Again, what exactly are we waiting on?
So what the deputy mayor was saying, that it's been brought to his attention, that there could be an active DA, an old DA onsite. So prior to him making a decision, he would like the information to see, is there an active DA or is there not?
Mr Mayor, once you lodge the DA, if it's approved by the council, if any significant works done for this block of land will be activated for goods, there is no certain times to be lapsed.
Yeah, technically, to activate the DA, all you actually need to do is pretty much clear the land or do a survey. So it's very, the old DAs were very easy to activate until only, I think, it was a year ago, they became a bit more challenging. So it could be active, and I think it's valid.
The, that particular DA, is that outside the current zoning of the land at the moment?
Thank you, councillor. Can I maybe go back a step to the deputy mayor? I mean, the recommendation here is simply to undertake a broader conservation zone study as part of the principal LEP review. As a part of that study, we would be looking at all previous aspects relating to this land, including whether a DA exists, still exists, still current, not current. But we're only at this stage seeking the recommendation that we conduct a study. That's it, not to actually make any final outcome decision.
I'm sorry, Mr CEO, I can't move any motion, except any motion unless I get all the information, a clear, crystal clear. If it's activated or lapsed?
Right. Councillor Haggerty?
Yeah, I was actually going to request that we move this into confidential, because I wanted to ask some questions, but given there's a request for deferral, maybe we can meet halfway in the middle. Happy to see what councillor Rhodes's motion is, but if it includes a briefing for councillors in between meetings, I can probably ask my questions there, and I can, Deputy Mayor.
I will put my motion then, Mr Mayor, so that possibly we can discuss it.
Thank you.
And this is in light of the numerous people who addressed the meeting now on this regard. It's obvious that council has got an obligation to forward this matter on behalf of the private landowners, as well as council's obligations to the conservation areas in our LGA. So the motion would simply read, number one would stay the same, number two, undertakes a broader conservation zone study as a part of the principal LEP review project, and three, allocate the funding to be completed, under review of the budget to complete this study, and collaborate further discussions, which might answer councillor Haggerty's issues, with further discussion with private landowners. So we need to get all the information out there so that we can move this forward one way or another. So I don't think there is any point in us deferring it. What there is, is a need for us to gather all the information with briefings, councillor, so that we all understand what is currently the situation with the private-owned land, the situation with council's responsibility regarding our obligations in regards to conserving ecologically sound land. And the only way that we're going to be able to do this is by gathering all the information.
All right, just so we're clear on the motion, and I'll get to you in a moment, councillor Caliander. So basically, one and three as per the report.
Yep.
And point four.
Collaborate with further discussions with private landowners, as well as investigate possible rezoning of the blocks, along with the other identified sites that is a part of the broader conservation study. We've got to have a, some sort of direction by council as to how we treat this in the future and moving forward. It all has to be done together.
I just would caution slightly that if you, that having the discussion with the landowners, but also saying that we're going to continue down this certain path, doesn't necessarily, if you put yourself in their shoes, doesn't necessarily show that we're kind of in a neutral position, if you know what I mean?
Unfortunately, we're not in a position to say one way or the other until we have all the information, until we have listened to the homeowners, the people who own the land, and can consider all the facts together. So it's not that we're going to be saying, we're going to be doing one thing or another, but it is to move it forward so that we can address this matter sooner rather than later.
Yep. Okay. Do you have a second for the motion? Okay, well, that lapses for the moment. Councillor Caliander?
Man, this is not specifically in relation to this matter, but in hearing some of the public presentations and, you know, from correspondence that I've received from residents, there seems to be a very concerning pattern of people not knowing, you know, what sort of consultation is taking place, or, you know, falling through the cracks. And these are people that should be involved in these discussions, should be involved in these consultations. How are we making sure that, you know, these gaps are being plugged firstly? And how are we, how are we organising who is receiving notification about some of these things? And now that we know that there are some key pieces of the puzzle that have been missed, how do we make sure that we address this? Because I'm quite concerned by what I'm hearing from residents and also in the last few weeks, receiving information from others who have not presented today about lack of consultation and communication.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. That's probably worth bringing up as in committees we discussed of our, I know we have a policy, is it the community engagement policy, I think it is, as part of the, so obviously, something isn't working, I think, could be better. Or sorry, say, it could be better.
I agree, and sorry to have a second bite at the cherry, but this is sort of an issue that, it's not the first time it's been raised. I know over a number of years ago, I argued very strenuously against reducing the radius around which, around a development application or whatever, that, you know, people would get notification only within a certain radius, and that was reduced a few years ago. I argued quite strongly against that, and, you know, part of the reason is this. How can we make sure that we strengthen some of those processes and procedures so the people that should know these things are being included and are not sort of finding out at the last possible minute, which I'm sure is quite distressing.
And, yeah, you'd probably say going back to the previous item, the people, neighbours probably don't out-question whether they knew about it.
I have a couple of questions as well, Mr Mayor.
Yep. Let me just, just one moment. So at the moment, we have a move for deferral by deputy mayor, second to councillor Goodman? All right, good. Okay, yes. Councillor?
If I can say something, well, look, maybe when I get an answer, if the DA is activated or not, I may consider what you said, my, you know, my call is councillor, you know what I mean? I'm a very open-minded person, but first of all, I want to stand on very concrete and solid ground.
Look, Deputy Mayor...
To be able to make a decision.
Yeah, I think if we have councillor Haggerty who has some questions, we have councillor Caliander who brought some, people have concerns, so, and I think the point is, people are concerned and not ready to make a decision, and we should do, our duty of care is to go in to get all the information before we make a decision. Councillor Rhodes?
The first question is, is there a maintenance management plan for the significant portions of the land that is privately owned that is ecologically significant?
So refer this, I think, the question is that because the land is currently zoned environmental, that is there a plan of management? What are the obligations on the landowner to maintain that land? And is there a plan of management?
I'll refer that to the director of planning and compliance.
Through the CEO, thank you. There could be a management plan specific to the other site which has a more recent development application approval. Otherwise, there would not be any management plan on any of the sites, given the age of when the sites were established or when any DAs had been determined on them.
So through the CEO, if, for example, there is a weed infestation on the site, does the owner have an obligation to do anything about it? And if not, does anyone?
Through the CEO, so if there is a weed infestation or another problem on the site, it would need to be dealt with in accordance with the opportunities and constraints on each of the sites. So each site has a restriction on the basis that it's affected by ecologically significant land, so it would need to be dealt with according to those restrictions.
Yep. Thank you. Councillor Rhodes?
The second question then would be that seeing though these three portions of land are owned by three different landowners, does that make it inconsistent? Is this something that council has any opportunity of protecting the economic, the ecologically significant land if it is not addressed?
Thank you. Councillor, may I suggest this? Because the matter appears, if I'm right, to be deferred, I'm not preempting it, I would appreciate if you would ask all the questions, we'll take them on notice, that way we can give you a fuller answer.
My only concern with the matter being deferred, and I thank you for your comments, is that I'm just trying to make it clear, is there any responsibility on anyone at this particular stage for the maintenance of the ecologically sound there isn't? Thank you.
Okay. I'll put the matter, all those in favour of deferring. Please raise your hands. I declare it unanimous. Thank you. And can I just say, I think, sorry, I want to make a comment. I think that both parties who are here, obviously the landowners... the landowners as well as Miss Staines, I think that there is a, there actually is a common vision. It's quite disappointing that council in those many years did not take up that opportunity to build, to put a boardwalk through there, because I think it's good that, Miss Staines, you get to enjoy that or have been around that land, but it would be great that if we could have access to the beautiful river that we have. And I think if you go to council's resolutions, we do, it's very important. Because I think people interacting with nature is a great way to preserve nature, and I think we lack, we could be definitely doing more about that. So I think there, I think we could get to a, a hopefully happy medium amongst everybody potentially. But I want to thank you all for attending today and putting your, taking your time to be with us. The next item is Plan 04, on page 119, the Macarthur, two Macarthur Drive holes where the LEP amendment, page 119, tab four, with the recommendation on page 120. Move councillor Harrell, who have a second, or second to deputy mayor? Plan 04.
Sorry, I should put my, my microphone on. I would like to ask a few questions about the submission from Transport for New South Wales. I understand that there are, you know, works taking place to upgrade Heathcote Road at the moment. How will, how will this impact on the fact that those works were commenced to ease some of the traffic congestion issues along that stretch? It seems like basically two steps forward, one step back. So you're upgrading the road because historically there were significant congestion issues, and then you're basically kind of adding a whole bunch of traffic to it. So that doesn't seem to be accounted for.
Yes, I'll refer that to the director of planning and compliance. Also refer councillors to page 125, under traffic and the transport for New South Wales.
Through the CEO, thank you for your question. So I can take on notice and offer you up some detail around the modelling and the studies that were undertaken. I think that would probably provide a valuable answer with respect to what the sort of net traffic impacts would be. Yes, I think you have a lot, yeah.
Just one second. It says even in the report that the proponents' traffic impact assessment doesn't correspond and is outdated. So it, does that differ, is that different to the, to the modelling that Transport for New South Wales currently has? And was that included in this assessment? And if not, why not?
Okay, so I think what's important to remember is that any, so the in-principle, you know, concepts that form the basis for the development have been supported by transport. Any outdated modelling, this has had, you know, numerous gateway extensions and has been longstanding in nature. So while some of the technical reports might be outdated, the in-principle concepts have been supported. And so while, you know, logically you're saying you're adding more density and while we're improving the road network, we're adding more density, so we might get back to where we were. Generally, the, the traffic improvements are seen to improve the traffic flow in the area, notwithstanding the increase in vehicle movements. And of course, given its location in close proximity to a train station, obviously there's a heavy reliance on patrons, you know, utilising public transport. So we can give you a breakdown of what kind of points formed the basis for the in-principle support. But generically, it's, it's supported on the basis that it's within close proximity to a train station and the traffic improvements would offer up some better management of the traffic flow in that area.
One more question, if I may. I also noticed that in the report, there was mention of a previous VPA that involved the signalisation of that intersection at Macarthur Drive. There's no mention of that being part of the current proposal. Why is that? And secondly, I think some of those assumptions does, don't necessarily hold true. So if you look at other areas where there is high density in close proximity to a railway station, there are still significant issues around parking, issues around vehicles and things like that. So the assumption that just because it's right next to a railway station, that will mean that there is, there will be no impacts of traffic and congestion, I just don't think holds water.
Sure. On the VPA comment, if I may, yeah, on the VPA comment. So the VPA negotiations have stopped and we're working through a contributions plan to facilitate the developer contributions for the development. At the same time, the road improvements and infrastructure such as traffic lights are typically conditioned as part of the development applications. So that will form part of the development application approval process. And you'll find that that will entail a lot of the fine grain sort of road improvements and not be captured in a VPA or in a contributions plan. And the, any other sort of specific comments that transport might have will be captured in the final department of planning assessment in addition to that. So they're the comments that I would offer in response.
Again, councillor, page 125 towards the bottom. It not only talks about the traffic lights, but also further work on the pedestrian, safe pedestrian access around the railway station because of the increased development yield.
Well, my understanding is that part of the upgrades to Heathcote Road involved pedestrian access from Voyager Point to Holsworthy Railway Station. So will this impact that part of the plans going forward? And I guess, you know, we don't have, we don't have a lot of leeway to get this wrong, right? If we, if we kind of say, oh, look, it'll be captured by this part of the process or whatnot, and then, you know, five years down the track, it leads to, you know, some pretty poor results. We've already heard from the strata manager about accidents taking place at that location. We want to make sure that we try and get those sorts of things correct from the get-go. Can we include anything like that in the recommendation to ensure that we strengthen the, the traffic and the, the flow and that aspect of it as much as we can? Because I'm not comfortable supporting it in its current state.
Okay, through the CEO, in response to your first question, this will not impact on the link to Voyager Point. And transport are doing inactive transport link already. So in terms of the access, that's not going to be impeded. I guess anything else in terms of local infrastructure or any upgrades or improvements that we think need to be captured can be done under the contributions plan, which will be publicly exhibited, brought to the council, yeah, obviously to the community for engagement and comment, as well as any mitigation measures that could be imposed as conditions of consent on a development application. So while the transport will have some more oversight of this and the department of planning will, you know, finalise the assessment and iron out any sort of big picture transport and, and traffic measures, there is still that opportunity for development, developer contributions plans to incorporate certain measures. And as I said, often is the case that the DA will also directly link the delivery of road improvements, traffic lights, anything that we feel may have been not missed or not been outlined in detail as part of the planning proposal process.
Mayor, can I ask a question just in terms of process? What would be the impact of deferring this item until some of that information was, was ready?
They've already had a, through the CEO, they've already had a extension to gateway. So if we defer this, we'd have to restart that process all over again. So this is effectively that last, the second point as to when we bring it to the council for endorsement, off to the department for the final assessment. If we were to defer this, we would surpass the extension timeframe for the gateway, which means that council officers would need to bring it back to the council for a gateway determination. If council resolve to endorse it for gateway, go back to the nitty gritty assessment process again. So we would have to start the planning proposal process again in terms of bringing it back to the council for a gateway, off to the department to issue a gateway, back to council for consideration.
Sorry, microphone please.
Sorry. Is there a reason why it has taken so long to, to get to this point? So that, you know, a question, say, around traffic would then have, mean that the whole planning process restarts?
Through the CEO, so is there a reason why it's taken so long to date? I guess just the different moving parts of the planning proposal, the merit-based aspects and negotiations in terms of developer contributions, VPA versus a contributions plan. There's, it was just subject to a number of different layers of assessment that resulted in it being in for, for this period of time. Nothing specific, yeah?
Sure. I know there are others with questions, so I will let them have, have the opportunity to ask those questions. But I think as it stands, I'm not very comfortable with, with it proceeding in this form because there, you would know this, ma'am. Every single day, we get contacted by residents about traffic and transport issues in our area. We have an opportunity to try and get this addressed from the get-go rather than allowing it to go through to the keeper and trying to do it after the fact. So I'm just not satisfied that that's been dealt with.
Yep. Councillor Hagerty?
Thanks. If we're, this one a bit difficult to follow, but some of the stuff that was potentially gonna go into a VPA may now be conditioned or go into the contributions plan. If, if that's the case, why do we bother doing VPAs at all?
Well, I think the VPA in its nature is voluntary, so it's up to the applicant to propose it. And it seems if we haven't, whether it's withdrawn or whether it's been agreed with staff, I don't know, the technicality, whether it's just easier to do it as a, as a DCP amendment or what is it, sorry? CP, but yeah, I say what you've, you, yeah, so you're saying you dropped the, you've dropped the VPA, that's not happening anymore. So what's happening now instead? Yeah, CP. Yeah, so they're saying that, yeah, amending the contributions plan. So technical stuff that they decide to do. But look, I think, if I can make a comment, that it's, the CEO just pointed out, as in the report, that this has been going since 2019. Then it was endorsed by council 2019. I think the applicant's been working on this for nine to 10 years. You know, things, everything's gonna get outdated, you know what I mean? It'll be by the time it just goes round and round and round. And I think it gets down to, yeah, we need to do things more efficiently. A lot of this, there seems to be a theme, not just with regards to planning, but with regards to, I think, just general, the way we do things, I think we need to communicate better. It seems to be recurring theme or whatever, whatever is that we're doing. But councillor Caliander, if I can ask you from your point of view, that is it, is it a matter of needing more parking spots? Or what's the, what's the situation you're saying?
No, and perhaps this is another situation where having a site visit would be useful in helping all of us conceptualise what we're actually looking at at this site. You have a road that for many years basically went from two lanes to one across Harris Creek Bridge. And then there is still, due to the, the construction works occurring, there's still a lot of issues around traffic flow. And we're asking for, you know, a significant amount of added growth of whether it's population, cars on a relatively small side, without looking at how the, you know, how that's gonna work in practicality. And we're kind of, you know, I don't mean this in an offensive way, and I apologise if it comes across that way, but I am very uncomfortable with the idea of, well, it'll all work out in the long run. Because time and time again, we make that assumption and it doesn't. And it's not very efficient or effective in five to 10 years to try and reverse engineer the solution. Why don't we get it right from the get-go? Because these, you know, there's been a massive upgrade of the road that has been occurring over the last three years. The modelling is outdated. Why don't we actually look at, you know, what we need to get it right in, in the first point?
Can I respond by saying, and I think this is where, when we're doing a, as councillors, we have the strategic responsibility for the LEP versus the actual DA itself. And it seems that now when we're doing LEPs, amendments, that we're effectively kind of doing the DA at the same time. So you'd, what I'm getting at is that the question is, do we think that this is an appropriate use of the land in that area? And then if we do, yes, then maybe there are traffic concerns, but you'd like to think that through the DA process, where they'll have to do a whole bunch of new traffic studies, traffic reports, when they really get into the fine grain, like I wonder if that's the right time to say, well, yeah, let's go for it. I mean, because that's, ideally, that's how the process should be. Correct me if I'm wrong, through the CEO? Sorry, do you want us?
Through the CEO, I'll add that Transport for New South Wales will offer up their comments as part of the DA process as well, particularly with any signalised intersections and whatnot, it will require the concurrence of transport. So they'll continually be involved in the process and see it through to the end.
Sorry, one second, councillor Rhodes. I understand what you're saying, ma'am, and I, and conceptually sure that works. But the problem with looking at it through just a specific DA process is that you're just looking at the application of that one, you're determining the application of that one, one, one proposal rather than looking at how it intersects with what's occurring there more broadly. And I know the idea of the DA is to look at all of those factors. But like I've, I've just been saying, time and time again, we've seen that that's not actually worked. So conceptually, yes, but I think in reality, the, the evidence bears out that that's not quite what we're, what we're seeing. And what I would like to see is us being a little bit more kind of, you know, catching the problem and address and identifying a solution upstream rather than having to, you know, look at the, look at how we resolve these issues in five to 10 years' time after there's been accidents, after there's been, I hope not, God forbid, you know, deaths of community members and things like that. You know, we had to fight for, you know, 10 years, actually longer, longer than 10 years to get the state government to fund that upgrade of Heathcote Road. I don't want us to be in a situation where we have to fight for another 10 to 15 years for further upgrades to that road because we have approved developments that require significant upgrades to infrastructure.
Great. Thank you. Councillor Rhodes?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr Mayor. Look, I understand exactly what councillor is talking about. And we've got to remember that of the 62 submissions received, there were 10 submissions in support and 52 submissions against. However, I also understand that we're making a zoning decision here and that, I, I draw the attention to page 126 at the top of the paragraph. You know, council is not the planning-making authority as per the gateway determination. And should this proposal proceed, the planning proposal is highly likely to be referred to Transport New South Wales. Can you explain the terms highly likely? And is there some stronger wording that we should be putting in there so that we are addressing the concerns of constituents regarding traffic? So that the planning proposal is not highly likely to be referred, but is, will necessarily be referred to Transport New South Wales to secure the, the confidence of the 52 submissions that we're objecting on the, on the, on the basis of number one, traffic. Is that possible?
Just if you can let the question be answered, then we'll.
Thank you, Mr.
Through the CEO, we've used that wording because council is not the plan-making authority. So we're assuming that that will be the likely scenario. To reinforce the council's position, we could make an amendment to the recommendation to explicitly request a re-referral to transport before a decision is made by the department.
I therefore make that amendment to the motion, Mr Mayor.
Do you have a second? No, no, she's making an amendment.
The amendment's for a re-referral to Transport for New South Wales?
Yes.
I'm happy to put that as a point six if.
Does that affect the timeframes and? No. Yep.
Sorry, ma'am, was, was it not referred to traffic New South Wales at all before?
Yes, and it'll still go again. There'll still be a DA which will do more of a detailed traffic study.
So it's just gonna be the same thing again?
I guess reiterate that, yeah.
This is in reference to page 126, the top of the page, where it is written is highly likely to be referred to transport. All we're saying is that instead of highly likely, that we ask that it be sent.
I totally understand that, but wasn't it initially referred to traffic New South Wales?
Nothing to do with that. This is the processing of the DA, just ensuring for those people who have got considerable considerations regarding the transport, the traffic issues, that the, the proposal, should it proceed, will be referred to Transport New South Wales again.
I understand that, but my question was, it was already referred to traffic New South Wales?
It was highly likely that it might be.
No, no, previously it was referred to traffic New South Wales, that's what.
And Traffic New South Wales said yes. This will be in the DA process, the DA.
Councillors, if I may, so the highly likely councillor refers to, sorry, so if you read the clause in its entirety, the planning proposal is highly likely to refer to New South Wales prior to finalization by the department to ensure all concerns addressed sufficiently. A future DA will also be referred to Transport for New South Wales for approval. So the actual DA process will definitely be referred to Transport for New South Wales. We would ensure that happens. And I think that's, that's what you're seeking in your amendment, but that actually happens.
So can we keep the motion as it was, if that's what it is?
Well, let's see, what's the, what was the wording? So the director of planning just put some words there. Where? Point two. Wouldn't that happen anyway regardless? So it's just reiterating.
I don't think you need the last bit. Request that they refer plan to prefer this consideration, full stop. You don't need the last of the sentence. They get to make, they make their decisions. You almost tell them when and how to make a decision. Can't do that. Yeah, I, I, Mr. Mayor, I'd recommend we stop it. I'd recommend we stop it after the word. I recommend, Mr. Mayor, that we stop after the word consideration. So to read, request the DPA refer, I can't read it now, request that DPA refer the planning proposal, Transport for New South Wales for further consideration, full stop, delete the balance. We, we can't dictate to DPA when and how they make their decision.
Is the mover and a seconder happy to accept that?
Can I just clarify something? The part that we just deleted, was that in reference to DPE making a decision or council making a decision?
Right, because we're not making the decision regardless.
We don't make the decision, so we can't tell them how to make the decision.
Yeah. So we have to vote on the amendment, on the amendment first? Okay, so, write a reply, everyone happy? Done, okay, so we'll vote on the amendment first, which is the addition of that, what is now, what's there in front of us is point two. All those who would like point two added to the motion, please raise your hands. Yep, we need that, we need that, it's. This is to add the extra bit to the motion. Okay, so to add the extra bit. Not voting on the motion yet. Councillor Hagerty? Hand it, okay, you got that?
Again.
Yep. Was it up or down?
Down.
Down, okay. Okay. Yep, okay, cool. Against the amendment? I declare the amendment carried. So the amendment now becomes, now becomes part of the motion? Yep, great. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hands.
Six. Six.
Seven. The amendment, yeah, motion. Yeah, keep it up.
He said that.
Up. Just wait for the, I'll tell you. You got it? Yep, against?
Three. Three.
Four, I declare the motion carried.
Are our, are we going to be recorded voting against that?
It is, everyone's recorded. Next item is Plan 05, Call the Report, Clause 4.6, Variation Standards, 136, sorry, 137, Recommendation 137, move councillor Hall, second to councillor Rhodes, all in favor? Against, I declare it carried. Plan 06, 140, Tab 6, Recommendation, Page 141, I'd like to move a motion, which is option B, sorry. The whole thing? Yeah, the whole thing or just that? Oh, sorry.
It's up there.
Okay. So the motion, the, the context of the motion is for the council maintain its resolution regarding the height limits of the suburban centers, and I'll use that terminology. I, you know, the Cecil Hills, the Chipping Ordens, the Water Grove, the Holesworthy, but maintain its support for height within Liverpool CBD or, you know, other areas where heavy train, heavy rail exist or transport corridors exist. And also to maintain our previous position as exhibited regarding the 2168 area rather than having R4 high density, but rather keeping R3 medium density in those areas. Now, point 5A talks about begin a review of council's Liverpool centers and corridor strategies to align, to align with our 108 plan on 12 meters. And this is the review is to create a strategy to focus on high density development in centers with high amenity that are serviced by infrastructure, supporting by rail infrastructure, rail slash transport infrastructure, if I can put that in there. Right, and. And slash or high amenity and supporting services.
Happy to second that, Mr. Mayor.
There's no B, C.
Yeah, so infrastructure and slash, can you make that after infrastructure where it says and? Slash or high amenity and supporting services. Cool. So we got a second or councillor Rhodes, in speaking for the motion. In speaking for the, the motion, once again, I think we, first, LEP review, overall review since 2008, holistic, sorry, the second one, I know there was part, part one of this done before, but I think we made it very clear what the community, community's views are. Suburbia should be, should remain suburbia in its feel. And I think the logic that was adopted in 2008 to do the LEP, I think has, has potential flaws in it. We are not anti-development in this area, we're taking more than our fair share of population growth, but saying that, hey, there should be a centers, it shouldn't be in the middle of nowhere, or I won't say nowhere, but it shouldn't be in the middle of areas where there's this R2 density, areas that have been only built for 20, 30 years, saying, oh, we now need to create urban redevelopment there, doesn't make sense. But I think we are, we are supportive of affordable housing, we are supportive of increased supply if it's in the right location. And I think our LEP and our 305 square kilometers allows plenty, plenty of scope. So, and I think it's important that we get our centers and corridor strategies to align with that vision. So I think it's a, that's a positive and I recommend all councillors to support it. Councillor Hagerty?
Yeah, sorry, could you just explain the difference between points two and three again, please?
Points two, so points two is what we already resolved in the first council meeting with the 108 plan about dropping the height limits in those areas, in the centers.
Yep.
And point three, so when you look at the report, housing, where is it? One second. Tell you what page, if you bear with me. So I'll say page, say page 150 in the report where it talks about Green Valley. So two submissions were received, one from Land, New South Wales Land Housing, where they're saying, no, we'd prefer you to keep it as R4. And the recommendation in the report is that we adopt housing's view, where this recommendation before you that I have moved, it says, no, we continue the way that we were going, which is to make that area R3. And the same with, I think it's same on now page 151 in Ashcroft as well. So basically, Housing Corporation's saying, no, no, we want to keep our density and our height. And this says, yeah, thanks for your feedback, but we'll continue on the path that we wanted to go. Does that answer your question, councillor?
So is there a difference between two and three?
Pardon?
Is there a difference between two and three? It sounds like we're making the same argument in two and three.
Two different things, because number two more relates to.
One side of buildings, the other one's zoning.
Yeah, and the two is relating the centers as such, the shopping, the shopping centers, where three is just relating to that specific area in 2168.
R3, yep.
Yeah.
Okay, well, yeah, thanks, understand that one now.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, may I recommend that where you've got five, just the A part, make all of the A part as the new five?
Well, I think maybe it should be six, actually.
Well, no, because the last bit is notify submitters of council's decision, full stop. So that is part of council's decision. So I would make that all five, and then the old five becomes six, get rid of the word and. And make five, six. So you still have to get rid of the and?
Yeah.
Yeah, so get rid of that and make it six because technically you're notifying of all the decisions, including the new five. It makes more sense that way. And make notify submitters, yep, as new six. Thank you.
Great. Any further discussion? I'll put the matter, all those in favor. Unanimous, okay, carried. Thank you, everyone. I'll declare a 16 minute break. I'll see you back at.
16!
All right? I'd like to declare the meeting resumed. Next item on the agenda is page 157, COM 01, Framework for Community Owned and Led Gardens.
I'd like to move the recommendation with one extra point.
Yep, what's your?
I'd, I'd just like to add a, I'd like to add a point three, that we just get a very brief report back to council after 12 months, just to have a look at applications that were successful, unsuccessful, and why, why they were unsuccessful, if they were.
I'll second that.
Seconded.
Can we also get some information on the, the sort of the nature of the application? So for example, were they in apartments, were they in specific areas? Just so we can kind of look at trends and what, you know, what is encouraging some of our community groups to put these ideas forward?
Lovely, cool. So, yeah, that should be fine. Does that need a separate point?
Yep.
To include councillor Cleander's point. Is the mover, is the mover happy with that?
Yep, happy with that.
All right, I'll put the motion, all those in favor.
Can I just thank staff for the work on this as well, please? Thank you.
The clarity unanimous.
All of the work that was done on this over quite a long period of time, so we got there, thank you.
Maybe Betty can go, councillor can plant a lemon tree there for, for limes, the limes? Next item is COM 02.
Happy to.
Page 164, move councillor Rhodes, second to councillor McNaul, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favor. Against, I declare it carried, unanimous. Next item is Corp 01, Investment Report. Page 172, Tab 9, move councillor Rhodes, second to councillor Hall, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favor. Against, I declare it carried. Next item is CFD 01, Page 102, Tab 10, councillor Rhodes, do you have a motion?
As per the book with an alteration to, so number one, as is, number two, as is, number three, all financial considerations to be considered as a part of the next year's budget.
Yep, do you have a seconder? Second to councillor Moon. Discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favor. Councillor, sorry, councillor Hagerty, you want to say something?
Yeah, sorry, there's a bit of delay there. I just thought with things going the way they are, there's more important things to be spending at least $350,000, at that $350,000 sum is conservative, speaking to other councils and councils at other councils, but I'll be voting against this. I think there are better things to spend money on.
Councillor Hagerty, this motion is not asking, as moved by councillor Rhodes, there's no expenditure as part of this motion. No, there isn't. It's only actually, for any, anything you'd like to consider will be part of the budget, which will go to the budget and it's up to. Part of the budget. Does that clarify? Pardon?
No, because we've already spent staff resources on looking into it and bearing reports, that does cost money, but, yeah.
No, but it's not $350,000, we spend staff resources on every question that every councillor asks, so, yeah. If you can put your microphone, please, councillor.
Yeah, can I just ask a question on this? Where did this originate from? Like, it doesn't actually, it doesn't, doesn't actually talk about the, the sort of where the idea came from apart from to sort of provide a bit of a justification for it.
Thank you, councillor. Look, the purpose of this and the urgency for it came for threefold. So firstly, it was something through discussions that I've had with others and many others. So if one looks at the T1, T2, T3, T4 of councils, T1 is the city of Sydney, it is the only T1 council. T2 is the city of Parramatta, it is the only T2 council. T3 councils comprise 14 separate councils. We are one of the 14 separate councils, which includes councils such as Fairfield and others. It is, you know, the view shared by many, including myself, the CEO, that Liverpool City Council is the third largest council. We have made submissions to be included in T2 with the city of Parramatta, that's being dealt with. A rebranding from Liverpool City Council to the city of Liverpool puts us in conformity with Sydney and with Parramatta and, and also with Sydney. So that was the first aspect of it. The second aspect of it is if you are going to rebrand, we need to make that decision now to commence the rebranding because we are moving into both a new building, the Civic Place Building, and a brand new library. So as such, we will already be required to remove our signage from the old building, the current building and the old library, and we are creating brand new signage. I didn't want to see a situation that we put the new signage on the two major new buildings and then 12 months later or two years later, we proceed with the rebranding, we have to take those signs down, et cetera. Putting up new cranes would be the greatest expense one, so we need to make that decision now. The third reason was as a result of many discussions with the new airport. We're all seeing the fact that everybody is referring to it as Bradfield City, and they're also now referring to it as the third largest city in New South Wales. With all due respect, it's a suburb, it's Bradfield suburb within the Liverpool city. So again, I want to differentiate, I believe that the council is big enough and should So again, I want to differentiate, I believe that the council is big enough and should differentiate itself. So they were the three main reasons we're looking at this rebranding. There is no cost with signage for the new building, there is no cost for the signage for the new, because we're already incurring those costs as part of the development. There will be costs of approximately three hundred and fifty thousand, because we have to rebrand some of our smaller, but that is something we can transition into.
I understand conceptually, however, and, and I think, you know, the examples of universities would, would bear this out. How, how often or how likely is it that a branding change will translate into, you know, these advocacy wins that were obviously, you know, that are part of the, the longer term goal?
I'm sorry councillor. So, conceptually- What's the likelihood of success as a T two?
Well, not-
Application?
Not so much what's the likelihood, but how, you know, how related is a branding change? And a branding change that, you know, many people within our community, you know, may not even recognise or realise. How is that going to change into being, being allocated into another tier of, of councils? Because similar attempts have been made by, for example, universities to, you know, change their branding to appear more prestigious or win certain demographics of students or whatever. And, you know, the impact of those things has been quite marginal and the costs have been quite high. So whilst I understand conceptually what you're trying to say in terms of the justification, I don't see the, I don't see there being any data presented as to the link between a branding change and, you know, wins in advocacy.
Councillor, it's, it's as simple as this. First of all, it's not my decision, it's your decision. It was my job to bring this to your attention. The reason I'm bringing it today as opposed to six months from now or twelve months from now is because we can't afford to put all the signage on the new building and then come back six months later and change the signage. That cost would be astronomical. So the question is, do you accept that you're the third largest city? Do you accept that you should be the same as, you know, T two as Parramatta, for which you've already endorsed us to put that application on for the T two status? That's the reality of it.
Just one second councillor. Councillor Hagerty?
Yeah, just a point of clarification, when you refer to the T ones and the T twos, that's just metro, there's also regional tiers. And you've got, I think in the highest metro tier, you've got both Wollongong and Newcastle, is that correct?
So, look, I don't have the list in front of me, I'm doing this from memory, but there, there is from recollection five, the, the T one is CBD. Then it's the second, T two is CBD two. And then number three, which we are, it's Metropolitan, and there's fourteen of us. And then it goes down to T four, two, five, which takes the country and regional areas as well.
So I think in the T two with Parramatta, I could be wrong, but in T two with Parramatta, you've got Wollongong and-
No, T two is only Parramatta City Council. It's a T two CBD. I've actually got the entire list for me and I'm happy to send you that entire list councillor. Unfortunately, I didn't bring it with me, my apologies.
Alright, no worries, but this decision on tiering is made by IPART. And I'm pretty, pretty confident they don't take into account whether you call it the, the city of whatever or whatever city council. I'm pretty sure that's not a factor in deciding how much they pay mares and councillors.
We've already put in the application as approved by council to be a T two. Why I raise that is that if we're going to make the change, a name, description, the first priority or the urgency is based on the fact that within the next three, four weeks, I have to authorise Bilt as to exactly what the description of our name is, because they start work on preparing the signage and the signage is affixed on both the library and the building on two separate parts before the cranes are taken down. I can't come back six months later. But if the name is changed, I also intend to write to IPART as a further supplementary submission to advise that we have now, council has endorsed the change of our description to city of Liverpool. Now, whether that will have an impact or not, it won't hurt in any way, it may have a positive impact, and I use the word may.
Deputy Mayor, someone?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Well, look, my understanding to the motion in front of us is crystal clear. As we said before, if the resolution carried, if the motions carried, so any financial impact on this resolution will be for the new product, not the order, new product. It's like a new signage, a new letterhead, a new stationery.
Yes.
So it seems to me now, number one, this is fine, number two, this is fine, number three could be like, you know, drafted in a different way. All the new signage and letterhead, all the cost will start when we have a, a new product, you know what I mean? So which is meaning in this case, there is no financial to be considered.
Yes.
At this stage.
Councillor, if I may say, Mister Mayor, if I may be permitted, I would prefer point three to remain as is. Because the problem with point three consideration in next year's budget, and you don't approve it next year, I have to make a decision now, I have to start authorising now, in particular the new signage to go up to the new building. So I need the authority to be able to do that. If you put me on hold until next year's budget is approved, Mister Mayor, I don't know how I can proceed.
No, no, I'm with you a hundred percent.
Sorry, just one second Deputy Mayor.
But just to make the point crystal clear here, any financial, okay, should be applied for the new-
There'll be, all financial payments would come out of next year's budget. We're already in May.
Next year's budget, but the point is, Mister CEO, the point is, we are not going to change all the sign of Liverpool City Council. We are not going to get rid of all our like, letterhead, whatever. So that's the point, has to be clear in this motion, you know what I mean?
Yes.
So all, all the, the financial-
You're, you're a hundred percent correct with that. The only signage we will be ordering now is the new signage, full stop. The old signage has to be removed from the old buildings next year, because we'll be moving out. There is no letterheads as such, in effect, they're all through the computer. We're not going to go around building by building and changing sign, it'll be as transition as new signs are needed.
Yeah, well, that's the, you know-
And this is why we estimate maximum three fifty.
I, I think now, the point is crystal clear, and I believe my colleague Hagerty, he can see is there is no financial implication on the council at this stage, only for the new signage, new stationery, and that's it. Thank you.
So the sign, so we're paying for a sign, correct, to go on Civic Place?
We have to anyway, with the old name or new name.
So, old name, new name, that's not costing us, because that's already factored.
Correct.
So that's not part of the three fifty.
Correct.
That's it, correct. Yeah, so, yeah, done.
Mister Mayor?
Yes.
The, the actual, the new, the new name will cost us less in signs, because it's less letters.
There's less letters.
Efficient.
Yeah. You'll be surprised to find out that the cost is not the sign, the cost is not the letters, the cost is the erecting of the sign on the building.
But that's fine, we're doing that anyway, so that's not, that's not part of the three fifty.
Hundred percent.
That's why we're not spending three fifty, you're doing it anyway, we're not authorising it. And I think, I think basically if, yeah, if you're going to spend money, you can talk about it in the next, in the next budget meeting, which we'll be having a couple of weeks' time, an extraordinary meeting, which is the right time for this.
And as expressed, it is a, a matter that can be done over time, and that's why we can't give up, it's got to go into the next year.
So, so to be clear, we're not spending any money, what is going on? I'm sure our graphic designer can knock something up and go for it and go from there. Alright, if there's no further discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favour? Against? Declare the motion carried.
Can I be recorded as voting against, please?
Next we have committee, committees. Anyone have any issues they want to bring up?
I'm happy to move them all as a whole, Mister Mayor.
It's not quite related to the committees, but in, in terms of councillor delegations, I'm no longer able to sit on the, or to be council's representative on the South West Sydney Academy of Sport Board. And so as a result, council will need to elect a, a representative to, to that body.
I was previously on that, that committee. I'd be happy to take it back up again.
Yep, just one second councillor Hagerty?
Yeah, can we pull traffic out, please?
Yep.
Got a question on that.
Okay, so we move that, move all the committees as a whole except for traffic? Or do you want to just ask the question now? Alrighty.
Yeah, just on item oh seven about pedestrian facilities for Cars Hill, have we done community consultation? Will we, will we be doing community consultation? Given the kerbuffle around thirty kilometre zones and, you know, making shared pedestrian traffic areas, probably might want to do some community consultation if we haven't already.
So what are you saying, the proposing, oh?
Yeah, at the back of, the back of the shopping centre, I can't remember, it might be Sarah Highlands Drive.
Yep.
Sort of making it a bit more pedestrian friendly, so just wanting to know, you know, is the community, has the community been consulted on, on what exactly, what is being proposed here?
No, refers to-
So it's item number seven.
Through the CEO. So upon adoption of these amendments, we would go out to engage with the community. This is seeking in principle support for the concept, so I, I would have to take on notice whether we've already done any engagement, but we definitely will go out to the community with some design detail post-adoption of this.
I think Charles has got his hand out.
Oh, thank you Nathan, councillor Hagerty, Charles, Lucille. Charles, did you want to?
Charles? Through the CEO, yes, I can just confirm that initial consultation has been done just about the facility, but additional one would be done before the facilities are installed. The, the main exercise here was just the design investigation.
Thank you.
While we're on traffic, can I just get a clarification of what the summary comment kind of means? I think it might be a formatting error or something, but it doesn't quite make sense in GB one or General Business one. Page two twenty two, sorry, two twenty three, right at the bottom. So it says, the committee supports removal of the timed no right turn, then it has the timings, restriction to be implemented. So if you're removing something, but then the restriction is to be implemented, I'm not quite sure.
Through, through the CEO, there's an existing sign, so that sign would need to be removed. And that, that's why we're saying the no restriction is to be implemented.
So the restriction will be implemented permanently, so the timing will just be removed and the-
The timing will just be removed, that's right, yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Sorry, just, it wasn't quite clear in there.
Councillor Harrow?
Yes, on, on the traffic committee, item GB five, Fifty Hill Road, Lunea, bus stop relocation, I'd like to have that resubmitted at the traffic committee for further discussion. There are some major issues relating to that issue, relating to that technical issue.
Yep.
That wasn't a decision of council. Am I, can I have it clarified if that was a decision of council?
Mister Waif, provide us any clarification on that? So what are you saying, do you want it moved or not moved?
Through, through the CEO, a change was made to an existing bus stop sign. That change was made by Transport for New South Wales. And the sign, after consultation with Transport for New South Wales, the sign was relocated to the original location. But if councillor Harrow wants us to revisit the subject, we can discuss it at the May Traffic Committee meeting.
I would have an objection to that, because it makes perfect sense with what has been done. The previous signage meant that there was the loss of street parking. By moving the sign as it is now, reestablishes that street parking. Look, I, I could argue the opposite, and I know the history of that going back some fifteen years. And the history of that is, I don't particularly want to elaborate on that in this session, because there are confidential issues at, at play, and it needs to be discussed. And I'm happy to do that either confidentially or at that traffic committee meeting.
So considering there's disagreement of views, can we?
Can I have, was there something that wasn't reported at the council meeting? Could I have that advice from Charles? I'm having difficulty understanding this.
Ultimately, if you're one of saying, so it's gone to the committee, if somebody wants it changed, it's probably best, maybe done as a resolution of council the next meeting or something, or rescind that part and have that discussion, because we're, we're, I reckon we can spend half an hour on this now if he's want to, and, but no one has the information to make a decision, because I don't, I don't get what's going on in reality specifically. Yeah. But councillor Rhodes is happy for it to be adopted, because the work has been done on it.
Yes, as far as I'm concerned, this was dealt with sufficiently at the traffic committee meeting. I was the chair of that particular.
Were you at the, the meeting councillor Harrow?
Yes, I was at that meeting. And because there were confidential issues at play, I did not raise them. I'm happy to raise them. And council, the Eric Committee actually knows about that, that's how far back it goes.
Alright, so, can, yeah, but if you-
I think that it would be perfectly reasonable for councillor Harrow to bring that up as a motion at the next council meeting. Tell us the reason why, we don't know.
Sounds interesting. Well, can I, can I recommend, just so we don't get bogged down, that we, I'm going to propose that we go into closed session for a matter at the end of the meeting. Can I recommend that we pull this one out for the moment to go, to go to closed session, so councillor Harrow can tell us what the issue is, because it sounds like it's more than just a little bus stop? Or, would you be happy with that councillor Rhodes?
Well, I'm most interested to know what it is and why it wasn't addressed by council, if that was the case.
Yeah.
And again, I reiterate, this was not a decision made by council, this is council obliging the decision that was made for it.
Alright, so let's discuss that in confidential session, that item, at the end of the meeting. Ask all the questions, yep. I want to also, I would like to, I would like to move that committee seven, the governance committee, confidential item zero eight being the legal affairs report. And that, and this item here in particular, move into closed section under ten A two C B of the Law Government Act. I'm guessing, no. But, you get, you get it, yeah, right? Because there are matters in there that of a confidential nature, much impair commercial advantage on anyone who'd be there. Alright, bless you.
We need to state two A in brackets, see closed brackets, just say-
No, we have to actually.
Yeah, no, we've got to find out what they are.
Yeah, the exact one, sorry.
Find out the exact ones, don't just accept two A.
So we move, we move the minutes as a whole, except for committee zero seven and that item.
Yep.
Moved. Who was the mover of that? Yeah, we're not getting a confidential, we're gonna, we'll get to it later on. Who was the?
I moved them as a whole, but we pulled those-
Yep, second councillor Moon. Yep, all in favour, against, declared carried. We move on now. Oh, we move into presentations is next. Yes, councillor Caliander, you have a presentation?
I do, thank you ma'am.
Please turn off your microphone. Thank you.
Yes, I do. So I want to make a presentation about the, um, incredible dawn service and NZAC display organised by Kelly Hill and Stephen Cheers of Water Grove. Um, this display came about as a result of Stephen's research and passion for military history. And, um, they've organised it sort of for the, over the last four years. Um, the display features about sixty to seventy Australian military uniforms and other field gear, um, starting from about nineteen fifteen right through to the current period. Um, and also includes things like peacekeeping missions, nurses' uniforms and a range of other artefacts that have either been painstakingly collected by, um, the residents or donated, um, from people far, far and wide. It was also really heartwarming to see the community support and enthusiasm for the display itself. Um, over the last four years, their neighbours have participated in both, both the dawn service that they organise and about two hundred and fifty residents from all around the area attended this year. And their neighbours are very happy to close down their street, um, to facilitate this broader community participation. So it's just a really wonderful example of, um, you know, people who are sharing their passion and engaging our broader community. And whilst it was very disappointing that, um, council couldn't support even broader awareness of, um, the display and of, of these incredible artefacts that we have right on our doorstep. For example, one of the nurses' uniforms, um, that they have on display, the only other, um, a copy of this is actually in the War Memorial. And there's only two that exist, um, and one is on our doorstep. Um, if we were able to, um, you know, share this more broadly with our community, I think it would be of great credit to council. But, um, you know, for councillor Green and myself who attended yesterday, um, it's just a really heartwarming display of community togetherness and, um, I wanted to, to make sure that in this forum, we were talking about some of the things that our residents have done. That is it.
And council couldn't promote it because of, can you say council, it was the same council couldn't support?
Because of, um, and I'll be honest, because of processes, because the way that we have, you know, the, the processes that we have set up, um, this, you know, make it very difficult for organisat-, sorry, not organisation, sorry, um, ordinary residents who are not part of an organisation, who don't have public liability insurance, who can't afford five and a half thousand dollars to book out one of our community venues for a week to share what, you know, the, the treasures that they have with our broader community. They don't, you know, they don't, they're not able to do it. So that's just one of the drawbacks that we, that we have, that we don't have a process to enable this sort of, um, you know, broader community.
Would they like, so you're saying they don't, it's not, it's not about them having the event on their street?
Hmm.
It's more about, well, presenting it somewhere else?
Yeah, so, um, earlier this year, um, I worked with the residents to see if we could have the display set up at the Water Grove Community Centre for the week. Um, and, you know, schoolchildren could come in and, you know, view the display, um, and the proceeds from any fundraising that was done would go to a, a war veterans', um, charity. Unfortunately, we weren't able to, to coordinate that. Um, perhaps we can do so for next year. Um, it's something that I'll be obviously taking, um, back to council staff, but our processes aren't set up, um, to enable these sorts of things where, you know, just local residents wanting to share something with our broader community, but they don't have, um, you know, say, public liability insurance or, you know, the funds to do those sorts of things.
And, and out of curiosity, so were they planning on staying there for the week? Like if it wasn't, if the, if the water, if it was at the Water Grove Community Centre, were they going to be there or? Like as in, because imagine you can't just keep it open and someone has to be there. Was that what they were planning to? Because I think it's a wonderful initiative.
Absolutely. Um, look, I'm, I'm not sure exactly, you know, the, the ins and outs of it. I'm not even sure if we got to that, that part of the discussion. I'm happy for the director to take it on notice, um, but, yeah.
Because it looked great. I saw it on your Facebook, I think it popped up in yours, belly or both, whatever it was, but it looked great and it looked really interesting. So, yeah. Um, can hear about it, but I'll refer to the CEO.
Yeah, look, uh, thank you councillor. Uh, very happy to work with, please, if you could refer to, uh, um, the director. Um, she's already has had some discussions and meeting with them about next year. Uh, we're happy to talk to anyone and everyone. Uh, we're also looking at quite a number of other areas uh, that we can look at and see how we can create synergies, if I can use that word, between so many different entities and groups who have stories to tell that actually intertwine with each other. So it's not a matter of having ten stories in ten different locations, but seeing we can start to collate these stories into one or two locations during the year. So it would help enormously if all details are provided.
Look, I, uh, like I said, it's mainly around sort of processes and, and how we, we set up in terms of our um, structures in order to enable these sorts of things. But, um, you know, I've previously had conversations around um, how we can get some of these stories into, um, say, for example, the regional museum or CPAC or, or whatnot. And so, you know, when I, um, when I suggested this to the, the residents and said, hey, these are, you, these are part of your community, these are for you to, to utilise to get what, this treasure that you have within your home out to a broader audience. And, um, they then advised that one of the first questions they were asked when they initiated discussions was, um, so is the date, is the date that you want to hold this flexible? You know, it's like asking is Christmas Day flexible?
Hmm.
Right? It's, yeah.
Well, look, I think if we continue with today's theme, there seems to be this underlying sort of communication, interaction, you know, we have art centre, museum, historical society, genealogical society and community want to do something, it should work, you know what I mean? Uh, I know the staff always very willing to, but that's the ones I think should be part of our broader discussion. But thank you, council, for bringing it to our, to our attention. Um, I'm sure the staff will, will, um, work on it for next year. Um, all right, so let's see where we confidential, we move into the confidential booklet?
Mr. Mayor, just before we go into the confidential, I'd like to, uh, thank council on behalf of the community, the Liverpool community as a whole and the surrounding areas on the, uh, blessed nights that we had and concluded last, last Sunday. I had a lot of feedback based on the, the blessed nights and the hard work that, uh, council staff, um, the director Tina and her team and everyone that worked on that, um, festival, they, everyone was very amazed by it. People from the local community and outside of our community came to Liverpool. I believe we had in excess of, uh, a hundred and fifty thousand people come through the doors. If I'm correct, is that right Tina? So, um,
Three hundred thousand.
Three hundred thousand. So on, on, on behalf of the people that I've spoken to, just want to say thank you for all the hard work and effort that everyone put in. And, um, they wanted me to actually say that on behalf of them, they thank Liverpool City Council for that event.
Could, could we get a report, not next council meeting, but maybe the meeting after, because I know the staff, we have the Motherland Africa, we look forward to seeing everybody there on the nineteen, twenty, around, around that sort of time. Um, but I think it would be good to get a report because I, um, I saw some, the staff actually had some actual means of collecting data about how many people went there using cell phones and they, you know, which was live, which is pretty cool. Uh, they showed us that on, on Sunday night. Um, so it'd be good. And once again, you know, what is, what is the economic benefit to the city? We know there are smiling faces galore. There's three hundred thousand smiling faces, return people, residents turning up, but it'd be good if we started getting some data because we then can use data to inform our decision making. You know, and see how else we can apply that to, when we do things, well, we should, we should not be uh, afraid to say, well, that didn't actually work. You know what I mean? Maybe we do something different next time or try. Thank you, soon to be Dr. Green.
Sorry, I, I have to, I have to clarify.
Valuation.
Doctor councillor or councillor doctor, both titles exist. Um, just, just on that, whilst we are kind of inviting feedback around blessed nights, um, I do acknowledge that, um, there's been great community participation, um, and there is a lot of, um, a lot of good, a lot of great, um, attention that has come from it. In speaking with a couple of, um, the local business owners, um, they are quite, um, I don't know, concern, concern is a bit of a harsh word, but they, they are kind of wondering what the long-term economic impact of, um, of blessed nights is. And I think, you know, part of the, the grant stream that was provided to organise these sorts of events was around, you know, stimulating the local economy. And one of the pieces of feedback that I've received is that whilst it's great for, you know, evening events, whilst it's great for activating that space in the evening, um, the businesses that are open during the day aren't, you know, aren't seeing any of that, that lasting impact. And beyond this month where the, this event is, um, is that going to help our local businesses stay open? Is that going to ensure that, you know, in the, in the, the words of one local business, during blessed nights, he's had to work, um, eighty hour weeks rather than his usual sixty hour weeks just to turn a profit because, um, the business during the day is less, less frequent. So he shouldn't have to rely on the additional, hopefully additional income provided by these events rather than, um, you know, the, just your, your normal day-to-day income.
Well, look, knowing, considering I spent probably a good three years of my life working on the mall, um, and uh, going through the building our new city programme, I think the, um, unfortunately, the mall finished, I think it was in October twenty sixteen, uh, ideally was built for a purpose. Uh, and it, it, the, what blessed night should have been happening then, there was a whole, there was a whole activation programme that should have been funded when, at the completion of the mall. And I think if you can talk, if we all know, um, uh, there was a gentleman who had a, um, uh, Hong Si, that, that restaurant there, who chose Liverpool over Barangaroo because he thought he believed in the vision of the area. And unfortunately, his business, uh, went bust. Uh, there was a great new mall, but there was no activation with it. So I think what we're seeing now is that, you know, the, the, the activation, the LEP review amendment fifty-two, uh, all had a vision, uh, into delivering a, a, a better city during the night and during, during the day. So I guess now we're trying to, we're now trying to bring that forward. Um, we'll have a whole bunch more events this year, but there is a vision. But, uh, yeah, I think that it's, yeah, we were going on a path and now we're going back on that path. Councillor Hagerty?
Uh, it was fine. I was just going to say, um, I bumped into, uh, well, it was relayed to me at an IFDA that the members of a, um, consulate were attended blessed nights and, and then had good things to say about it. So as councillor Moon did say, not just people in Liverpool, but outside Liverpool, actually, uh, international went there and were very impressed with it. So well done to start.
Hmm. Yep. Wonderful. But yes, definitely valid points councillor Caliander, which we need to, we need to work on. Councillor Green?
Um, could I suggest that, um, it seems that the Macquarie Mall has evolved in terms of from its revitalisation and activation. And I wonder if now it's really time for a ma-, a master plan to be, as, as, in terms of being strategic, um, of what is the vision for Macquarie Mall? What do we want it to look like? What should be in the mall in terms of, in the businesses and whatever? Um, that, you know, like rather than, you know, activation, relying on activation, my suggestion is maybe it's time that we move to a, a master plan. Let's get a master plan going.
Yeah, we, we kind of do have one, but I think maybe we, at our next committee meetings, we can discuss it because I can spend, yeah, a good half an hour.
Can I go on the agenda? Because I do think part of that with the, in terms of what, what with the businesses, some businesses that, you know, are, aren't doing as well as maybe others, that maybe part of it is that we need a coherent, cohesive, um, strategic master plan.
Yeah, well, yes, yeah, done. Point taken.
Thank you.
Great. Now, yeah, we don't have to go into councillors confidential yet, we'll just move to the confidential items. Yes, so page six eighty-one, six eighty-nine, sorry, in the confidential booklet or conf zero one. So miniature of the heritage advisory committee. Um, personally, I think we should, uh, you know, I'm happy to, I'd like us to go and, uh, inspect our heritage buildings before we renew any leases on them. If there are actual technical leases or licences. So I think it's mentioned in there. Number four. So can we, um, can we organise a, a tour of, um, that particular building that's mentioned in the report? Point on page six ninety-one. Point four. It's property. Property. It's property.
We get property to organise it.
Yep. Who has seconded?
Happy to second that, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Rhodes, in discussion. Put all those in favour, against, declared carried. Conf zero two, page seven thirty-five, recommendation on seven thirty-seven.
Happy to move that way.
Move councillor Rhodes, seconded, councillor Moon, discussion. Put the motion all as a favour, against, declared carried. Conf zero three, page seven forty-four, recommendation on seven fifty, seven forty-five.
Happy to move.
Can we move this one into, um, buzz? Yeah.
Cool. Yep. You happy with that councillor Rhodes?
Yes.
Yep. All right. Under the same provisions. Yes, I'll take that as a yes, ten A two one.
Am I, am, am I, you're at it, uh, five as well, same.
In which one, sorry?
At five, so three and five.
Oh, so three and five, you'd like to move the confidential to closed session?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, we'll leave it at the end. So we'll go, we'll jump to comp four now, seven forty-nine, page seven fifty.
Yeah, happy to move that way.
Move councillor Rhodes, second to councillor McNaul. Any discussion?
On this one?
Pardon?
Uh, just a question on this one.
Yep.
Um, I'll, I'll be vague. There are comments here about funding from both federal government and seven eleven. Um, and I was just questioning the, the whether we now assume that that is the total cost of that project because.
It was much less before, wasn't it?
It was considerably less.
Hmm, I agree. Good point.
So you can take it on notice, but, yeah, if we could just clarify.
I think, so I think the councillor Hagerty's point is that particular project was fully funded through contributions. Now that we got a grant from the federal government, uh, through Anne Stanley's advocacy, now that it seems to have consumed that whole grant as well as council's funds. I think I'll, uh, I'll refer to the, uh, CEO. I think councillor's, um, I'm sorry, Michael, I don't know your exact title. Um.
I'm the, I'm currently the acting manager for the strategic projects delivery team. Um, so the first cost estimation based on the concept design was about seven point seven million. But that was a few years back. So meanwhile, we anticipate with the increased cost and the time lapse that the project's going to probably most likely come in above that.
I think we need to build, I think we need to build quicker.
The road. How long is this road?
Um, it, it is, um, it's not that long. It's, it's very short. It's underneath this M seven. So it's connecting the existing Middleton Drive um, to the road on the other side on the M seven. But it is, um, you have to dig underneath it. You have to move the existing toll cables in order to make space for that. There's height restrictions requirements that we have to meet. Um, and then the transport also requested that the current shared path that it's at street level is going to be raised. And we will be building a bridge for that shared path that will be connected to the M seven.
Yep.
Look, I'll take, take it offline, but those, that was the reason I was given last time when it went from, when it doubled in cost. It's doubled in cost again. But I'm happy to take it offline.
Yeah, so this one here is that we actually, this, um, is actually so we can directly negotiate with John Holland because usually we have to go through a full tender process. Um, but because of the current situation, that the M seven is going to be widened, um, by John Holland for the M seven authority, it is in our benefit if we start some negotiation with John Holland and fi-, and negotiate to see if, we already had the discussions with them, if they would be willing to take on the project. They are, but that's how far we were allowed to take it. It is now a matter of, can we go ahead and move forward and try to negotiate a price with them? Um, in order to get this works done and piggyback on the work that they're already doing for the M seven authority.
Can I recommend that if the council, if the, if the, if the resolution happens that we express to them the urgency of delivering the project? Because if they're going to get to this in three, four years, we don't want another price doubling. I think it's a bit of, um.
Exactly.
It's relevant. All right. But yes, I think it's definitely worth taking offline and having a further discussion. But yes, I think it's definitely worth taking offline and having a further discussion, councillor Hagerty?
Yep.
All right, um.
Should we be asking for a further report on this?
Uh, it'd be good to discuss this in the committee when, when we get a chance, when it comes up, but, um, as a standing agenda item for different projects, but I'll refer to the, um, director of operations through the CEO.
Yep.
Yeah, through the CEO, that's probably the most appropriate format. In its simplest form, we, we were gonna build something, but it makes absolute sense because of, uh, the fact that John Holland are widening that exact part of the M7 that they would design and construct it. This actually makes, uh, it, it creates not only cost efficiencies, but it solves a lot of authorities as it relates to tollways and it gets rid of all the delivery risk from council. And I'm confident that, um, uh, the budgeted funds will, um, will fall, actually be cheaper if John Holland were the design and constructor.
Thank you.
All right, lovely. I'll put the motion all those in favour, against, I declare it carried. All right, so we'll, we'll jump to six, uh, conf-06, the South West Sydney Planning Panel, page seven sixty-four, recommendation seven sixty-five, councillor McNaul.
I'd like to move, um, as per the book plus a point three, please, Mr. Mayor, um, which I've sent through to Mr. George Arkas earlier. Which I'm happy to read out while we're waiting, if you like. Oh, there it is. And I'm happy to speak to it once it's seconded, if that's the way we move.
Do you have a seconder for the motion? Second to councillor Rhodes. Yes, councillor McNaul?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So when we're talking about the, um, Sydney Western City Planning Panel, I know that we are, we are also talking about, um, alternate members on that panel today, but, uh, community members, sorry. But what we always talk about is having council representation because we are, the council are representation being the advocates for our community and for our people and we know what's happening there. Um, what I'd like to propose is that, um, my understanding is when, you know, there are multiple meetings that occur before a decision is made around these major developments. Um, I think it's important that the, uh, alternate member, the alternate council member is also present during all meetings such that if we get to a position where the decision is to be made and the member who is on that panel can't make it at the last minute, we have an informed alternate member there. Because as in having an understudy for a play or something like that, you, you have that person there all the time and they're informed along the way. So I would like to propose that we make that change to our policy so that we're making the most informed decision that we can from a councillor perspective.
Yep. Councillor Hall, can I make comment?
Sorry, happy to support that. I think it's a great idea. It's happened to me several times and others, of course, and yourself as well. You get there and, and it's something that you, you don't know the background of. And then you, how can you make a valid decision if you do not know the background?
I agree.
Councillor Hagerty?
Very good appointment, Mr. Mayor. I totally support councillor McNaul. So, yeah.
Councillor Hagerty?
Yeah, I guess this is a point of order, but is that even legal? To, you know, councillors decide to pay themselves for turning up to a meeting as a, you know, as a observer? Is that sort of in line with policy or?
Yeah, I, I'm, I don't, I don't, I don't think it's, um, I can't see how it is. Ultimately, it's a payment expenses policy from council. Um, and if they're, if everyone else is being paid to attend, um, yeah, I think it's a, to councillor Hall's point, who's, who is, who is the alternate, he sees this. So you're better off having an alternate turn up to every meeting and at least be observing and understanding what's going on so when they do come to vote. But, um, um.
And presumably, we, we would need to, if, we would need to put the policy out on public exhibition.
Yeah, they would imagine that would happen automatically regardless.
Well, Mr. Mayor, it seems to me the members are paid by the, by the council. So I don't see any issues if the council passed like, uh, resolutions to pay the alternative.
Yep. Because it's not, it's one, it's not our committee. Councillor Hall?
Yes, we've actually done that back in two thousand and eight. That was then, I think, uh, the value was somewhere around about six hundred dollars.
Yep.
At that time, and I, it's, it, you know, it's only changed, I think, a year ago. We said we should look at it in comparison to what the, the state members, if you like, get paid as a.
You get same, get the same amount.
Same value or thereabouts because the state wouldn't disclose exactly what that was. So I think we guesstimated what that value was. They wouldn't disclose how much the other members.
Yeah, and this is twenty-five percent of the total of the, of the amount as the, the voting member does. Councillor Hagerty?
Yeah, just speaking against the, uh, proposed motion by councillor McNaul. Um, in particular that we pay alternate council members two hundred and seventy-five dollars to observe a meeting. Uh, just, I don't think we can justify that. Um, you know, we, I, I was opposed to, um, well, I previously put up motions in the, in the previous council that, um, we look at actually changing the times that this panel meets to be more accommodating to residents. Um, and, you know, I guess the same goes for, um, councillors as well. Um, but I, I just, I just can't justify, um, using rate payers money for a councillor to attend the meeting. I'm, you know, I get how the market works and I, I imagine if this goes through, we'll probably have, uh, better attendance at these meetings. Um, but really paying yourself to, to watch a meeting is, is, uh, beyond the pale in my opinion.
Yep. Councillor Hall?
With all due respect, it's not just a matter of attending the meeting. There are several reports and some of those reports are up to, or used to be, several reams of paper, meaning that you're going to spend quite a few hours reading through those. If you don't, you're really not doing your jo, your job. The other thing is here, the only ones who have to do that work, it amounts to vastly additional work to what you are doing as a councillor. And that was the original reason why we said we should be paying councillors to attend this separately. It has, it's not part of your committees or your other duties as a councillor. It is on top of that and only certain people do it. I think it's only fair that they get paid for that additional work. If you're just attending, well, then that's a, a matter for your conscience.
Well, yeah, I agree with you on that. You know, if, if you're on the panel, um, it's, it's, it's no different to any other sort of external, uh, board or, or panel that you're appointed to, you're doing additional work. And I do know that there's a lot of reading and, and work involved in this. My objection is to the payment of alternate members. But, you know, uh, uh, a, um, a, a particular matter before this panel may have, you know, there's ones I've been at and, and I think you've been on them too, councillor, uh, Hall, um, where they've had, you know, up to five or six sort of meetings in regards to, you know, coming back and forth. Now, it could be a situation where someone, well, you have two or three or four alternate council members who sit on all five or six of those meetings, but are never actually, um, the actual appointed members of that panel. Um, but they're attending that five or six times, they get two hundred and seventy-five dollars for, for watching a meeting. I, I just don't think that's, that's justified.
Thank you. Um, can I register, recommend councillor McNaul, just adding a point for saying that, um, so put the, uh, the policy, uh, on public exhibition and delegate to the CEO to finalise, you know, for twenty-eight days?
Yes, I'm happy with that.
Is a seconder happy with that?
Yes.
Yep. All right, there's no further discussion, I'll put the motion. Did you wanna say?
I just wanted to say that, you know, uh, and while I, while I hear what councillor Hagerty's saying, if it, firstly, we just have one alternate on the panel, so there's just one other person, not five or six other people. And secondly, if something is so complex that it takes five or six meetings to get to the, the crux of a decision on such a major planning issue, then I want the person who's there at the end, if that happens to be the alternate, to have all of that information so that I know the community's been as well represented as they can be. And I'm comfortable with that by having that alternate member sit in and, and take that on. Thank you.
All right, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare it carried.
Can I be recorded as voting against that one? Please.
Okay, we now move on to conf-07, page seven seven three. Recommendation on page seven seven three.
Happy to move that way.
Move, uh, councillor Rhodes, seconded, councillor McNaul. Any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour. Against, declared carried. Pardon? One more, no, we're skipping that one, we're not doing that one yet. We're going into confidential session for that. So we'll do conf-09 and then we'll move into closed session to deal with, uh, items. And we have, we have a few items in confidential. So conf-09, councillor Rhodes, eight, eight oh eight Animal Shelter.
Yes, thank you very much and I thank council for their, uh, report. Um, look, I'm going to, um, consider the information that has been provided as also I am aware that there is further implications on this matter yet to be disclosed. And, um, I will be deferring a response until the next council meeting.
Thank you. Okay. Um.
Three and five. And eight.
All right, thank you, everyone. I'd like to move that we now move into closed session. Um. Also agree that a satisfactory result would not achieve by inviting tenders for the transition of content manager to S double A S platform and ongoing provision of the supportive services by the proposed contract for the following reasons. Competition between resellers is deemed minimal as licensing and the product roadmap is governed by the proprietary owner of Micro Focus. Council has a long-term business partnership with the reseller Capiche Services who are provider professional cost-effective service. The cost-benefit analysis does not favour replacement of the council's core enterprise system at the time, playing an alternative approach will require a period of years. In the meantime, the existing system must be maintained to avoid business disruption. Council will not gain intended regulatory and cost benefits if content manager remains on the current on-premise model. Two, authorize the CEO or delegate to negotiate and enter into the proposed contract with Capiche Services Private Limited, noting that the proposed contract term and indicative pricing. Three, authorize the CEO or delegate to agree to, and execute all documents necessary to give effect to these resolutions by twenty, Friday, twenty-eighth of April, two thousand and twenty-three to avoid any price increases. On being put, the matter was resolved. The next item was conf-05. Counselor resolved that council agrees to a satisfy, that a satisfactory result would not be achieved by inviting tenders to renew the contract of pathway and to transition to a S double A S platform and ongoing provision of the supportive services that proposed contract for the following reasons. Competitive tenders are unavailable because the Info Global Solutions owns the proprietary software, is the sole supplier of pathway and an alternative supplier would be unable to provide and support the system. The cost-benefit analysis does not favour replacement of council's core enterprise system at this time and playing an alternative approach will require a period of years. In the meantime, the existing system must be maintained to avoid business disruption. Council will not gain the intended regulatory, operational and cost benefits if pathway remains on the current support model. Two, authorize the CEO or delegate to negotiate and enter into a proposed contract with Info Global Solutions, noting that the proposed contract term and indicative pricing. Three, authorize the CEO or delegate to agree and execute all documents necessary to give effect to these resolutions by Friday, twenty-eighth of April, two thousand and twenty-three to avoid any price increases on being put that the matter was resolved. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. I would now.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, can you just tell me about the, uh, the minutes of the governance committee meeting, which was in the, um, the addendum?
Yes, sorry.
The addendum.
Mm-hmm.
I, I wonder rather than, um, approving that, whether we might be able to discuss that at governance committee meeting.
Yeah. We kind of already resolved it.
You, we, we didn't get much of an opportunity that wasn't open to the floor.
Yeah. Um, we'd have to either recommit or rescind and discuss. So sorry about that. If you wanna discuss it. Just think about the, uh, we want to.
You'd have to rescind. If to rescind. And then we submit.
We resolve it, if we resolve it.
Yeah, it'd be a bit of rescinding if three councillors want to rescind.
Yeah.
Asking if three councillors want to rescind.
Yeah, I'm happy to rescind. Is there another councillor, you happy to rescind it?
You need three councillors to agree to rescind.
I'm, I'm happy to rescind it if we've got another councillor that will.
Need two more councillors.
Yeah. One more councillor, just to rescind the governance committee meeting so we can discuss that matter back at the governance committee meeting. As I went through it too quickly and we've resolved it.
We didn't discuss it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Do we have support? Just make it yes or no?
Yeah. Rescind, we have to rescind the governance committee meeting. Yep.
Got three.
Thank you.
Put all in favour?
Yeah.
No, so now you can motion all in favour?
So now, so we'll have to write, we'll have to write that up, but we have three indications. So the motion is that we rescind the governance committee meetings, meetings and we discuss it at the next committee meeting. That's the alternate resolution.
Thank you.
All right? All those in favour? Against, I declare it carried. So we just have to sign that and put that up. Did you get that, George? Yep. All right, thank you, everyone, I declare the meeting closed.